Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have a report of the board members.
Give a report for what's a few of the things that I've done this since our last board meeting on October fourteenth, I helped with the faiths of Raytown, that's a group of churches in Raytown who have gotten together to be of a help to our community and they distributed candy and goodies to the children and families on October fourteenth and then on October twentieth, I joined some other members of the MSBA collect at the collective bargaining round table for discussion here in Raytown, Raytown hosted that round table and it was wonderful. And I also joined as one of the sixty-two virtual participants of the REF, the Raytown Educational Foundation Run for Excellence. Such a blessing to be virtual. I paid, no, I paid. I paid, but those of us who were virtual got to run in our pajamas. That's me, that's my report, thank you.
Okay. I also participated in the round table, I went up to the to the building and make sure that everything was well. Also had a great meeting the day after our board meeting with the students at Ray South. I discussed a lot of fantastic things with them and I was really entertained by none of the things that they really wanted to do was about them. It was about other students, it was about younger students and ideas they had. They had one thing that they really wanted to get done and it was about really about getting the word out and that was through social media. And I think we may have came up with a solution for them to get that done, so I was really, really entertained with the meeting that I was able to have with the Raytown Student Student Council and I'm looking forward to, Raytown South Student Council. I'm looking forward to reading with the Raytown Student Council as well here briefly. The next thing I did was I went and met with the mayor about other issues that we are having, things that we're trying to get accomplished in Raytown as far as the school district and help the middle meet and get things done. I also participated in the trunk or treat at Southwood Church of Nazarene. It was tremendous with Dr. Madeline and Sisters in Christ and the faces of Raytown, face of Raytown. I went to the DEIB meeting at Raytown High School and that was really, really entertaining to see them doing something as far as DEIB. It was really, really intriguing to be a part of that. I also went, got, had opportunity to go to their teacher development day the same day as well and participate in that. I'm also participating with Sisters in Christ in their tutoring program that they're doing with Dr. Kredel and Ms. Curlin Whitney and her staff and some other tutors, the teachers they have from Raytown High School. I think they're doing a tremendous job. Also went with Dr. Griner and his staff with the real world learning training that they're doing or the real world learning thing that we did. I went to a meeting that they're having and also with Kiana Dickerson and Terrence Frazier. It was tremendous. We also got, got, got opportunity to serve harvesters. And we did the harvesters thing with, I wanted to give the kids that was out there a tremendous round of applause that they came out and they showed up and also they had a lot of volunteers from Sisters in Christ and also the Rotary Club, they showed up and did a tremendous job. And last thing to round off, we went to the MSBA convention and that was tremendous, so thank you.
All right, what else? All right, well, thank you. The board members all that got our new committee assignments and really working hard to align our committee goals and you guys have really stepped up, signed up as chairman of those committees and aligning those, those are our goals with the committees with the strategic plan that the executive staff put forward and partnering with them and just bridging the gap as Mr. Newton was saying with other, with other government organizations with the city, even with Rotary Club and REEP and REF. And so I really appreciate the work that everybody's putting in. We've got a long way to go, but making some good strides. Next we have a quarter superintendent.
So, good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District and members of our community. I want to bring your attention to item eight point seven as all the items under the superintendent's report are there for informational purposes. But I think it's most important at this time that while the board has voted and approved on our district board goals, the board and district goals, it's most important that we revisit those items throughout the year so that we, one, begin to embrace it, recognize that it exists and make sure it becomes a part of our practice. There's no sense in us creating goals if we're not going to adhere to them and this allows us to have a laser-like focus on the work. Are you all clicking for me or do you want me to run to the table and do it myself and then come back? Okay, thank you Kevin. So the first item that you will see, which is fairly new, if you can go to the next one, thank you, is our purpose. Our purpose is governed by our theory of action, our mission and our vision. And if you can see, this has been modified just slightly, but if you look at all three categories, the theory of action describes a set of concepts or ideas that talk about where we are going as a district and our intended purpose. These items are aligned with our mission and the vision for our district. And if you look at some of the buzzwords that exist within these three categories, you'll see terms like equitable, rigorous, high expectations. And it is for every single child with whom we are responsible for educating each and every day. So this item, as well as the document, has been provided to all of our schools and our offices to make sure that they are displayed so that we begin to read it, become a part of it. Our students should know it, our parents, our community and the staff should know what our purpose is each and every day. I encourage us to continue to use these items when we're sending out our newsletters so it serves as a constant reminder for what our work should look like each and every day. There are five goals that have been identified in our district, our board and district goals. And all of these items, if you will, are aligned to our strategic plan. Again, you'll see a common thread or common theme in the work. First and foremost, we are always governed by student achievement. What it looks like for our students, making sure that they have options when they graduate from our high schools. When our students leave, they should be able to choose a pathway and to be successful in that pathway. And what do I mean by that? If our students decide to go to college and/or if they decide to embrace a career or if they decide to go into the military, the foundation that they will receive here in Raytown Quality Schools is one of rigor that will allow them to be competitive with all of their peers throughout our nation, not just here in Missouri, but around the nation. And so again, if you look at the items, it is always about providing students with meaningful work so that there are positive outcomes for them as they exit. I oftentimes talk about the balance between college and/or careers. Which pathway should our children choose? And I believe they should be able to embrace them all. Because oftentimes we're pushing our children to college and many of them will tell you, college is not the route that I want to go. And so then the question is, how do we help them get there? Well, we have opportunities right here in our district through our Herndon Career Center where we can prepare our children with CTE programs. And I want us to hear this and hear this very closely. Students can take both options. If students decide to leave Raytown Quality Schools and to go into a career path, oftentimes with that skill, because many of our students leave with certification and they leave here with a trade, they can also go and work for a company who will give tuition reimbursement so they can then go to college and then our parents won't be responsible for the tuition. So there is a balance that our students should have when they leave because the choice should be theirs. And so when we look at student achievement, let's keep in mind, it's not only about where they are when they exit us in twelfth grade, but it's where they go once they leave us and make sure they're equipped to be successful. The next item, we can talk about what we're doing for student achievement, but we also must continue to attract, recruit and retain high-quality staff. That will remain a part of our conversation, working very closely with our human resources department. This is about recruitment. We talk about recruitment all the time and it is not a one-time shot. Recruitment is recurring and it is ongoing, whether it's by our social media presence, how we capitalize on those positives that are happening within our district and being able to communicate those things that are occurring, that are positive in nature. Those are the things that attract people to a school district. We will continue to actively recruit and put ourselves up against any school district anywhere to know that we will be focused on the staff because we have to take care of our staff in order for our staff to take care of our children. And so it's a cyclical approach to this process we call education. And so we will continue to do what we need to do for our staff because we value them, we appreciate them, but we also know that we have to be competitive with our salaries. And right now, that is one of the fights that we are engaging in. Not that we don't believe that our staff deserves the highest salaries there are, but there also has to be a balance and we'll talk about that when we get to the maintenance of our fiscal responsibilities. And so we will continue to make sure that we are attracting and recruiting and retaining. If you ask Dr. Calcara, he'll tell you recruitment, retention is the new recruitment. It's when we get people, how do we treat them and respect them and value them when they come into our district to know that this is a place where they belong. The next piece is strengthening community relations and communications. We do very well when it comes down to the communications piece, but we need to encourage more people to access that information. We talk all the time, we put information on our social media platforms, we are on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We're not snapping yet because I'm not sure about the snap piece. I just want you to know that I'm aware. We tick and we talk, right? So not really, Marissa, please don't get upset with me because I talked about TikTok. But we do follow TikTok just to make sure we're staying aware of the trends that exist so that we can continue to attract our community. And what I will say about community relations, we have our citizens advisory committee. We also have our community engagement committee. And again, working in education, it is a joint effort between parent, community, school. We are a conduit that leads to the success of our children. It takes all of us to come together to do what's best for our children. And I say all the time, when we look at the community relations and communications, none of us is as smart as all of us. And so we need to come together to continue to do what's best for our children inside and outside of our school. As we are moving forward, we're talking about maintaining and making sure there's fiscal and operational, and I'm going to use this word, integrity. And I believe integrity occurs when people aren't looking. And so let's go back to the communications piece. We will always maintain open and ongoing dialogue when it comes down to our fiscal responsibility and accountability measures because that's how we continue to operate our school district. We oftentimes have to make decisions about our facilities, our buildings and our monies and how we can provide our students with quality environments by which they can learn. And so I work very closely with Mr. Josh Huestead, who is our Director of Operations and Ms. Jackie Vernon, who is our Director of Finances. They have assumed some additional responsibilities over the past. And again, when we talk about communications, that information has been shared. And so I welcome you both and thank you both for your leadership in this work. As we continue to move forward, the newest part of our board's in district goals is board governance. And so when you hear the conversations of our board members being a part of this work, you will see them in the community. And I will say, from experience, a quality board helps get the work done. A quality board that is focused on children will get the work done. And I will publicly say to anybody, the board that you see before you works to ensure that we put children first in everything we do. And I may say that repeatedly, it does not negate that we look at our staff and support our staff because we need our staff to take care of our children. But our job as we signed up, we took an oath to do what's best for children. And so I just want to thank our board for being present, being involved, being engaged, being immersed and also being the mouthpieces for Raytown Quality Schools. As we move forward and wrap up this presentation, again, it takes all of us, our departments, our offices, our schools, our community, our parents, and more importantly, those voices that come with those that we educate, our most important customer is our children. We will continue to work hard to be the ray of hope for our children. And as I close, I publicly own errors when they happen. We had an error in our board and district goals. Mr. Burton did it, but I will sit here. I was just checking to see if you all were listening. And so what I encourage you to do is to make sure the old document is removed and it will be replaced with one that has a revision date at the very bottom. I do believe in making sure we model for our children, but it also goes to show that we're human and we make mistakes. And so let's give each other grace. So I ask for your grace in taking those posters down and replacing them with the other. And I'll give you a quick story. Last week at two o'clock in the morning, I was reading the board district goals because it always has to be a part of who I am. And at two o'clock in the morning, I realized there was an error in that document and I lost it. And I know I promised the team I would not shoot emails at two or three o'clock in the morning. I apologize for doing it. I don't apologize for me wanting to correct the mistake. But to our children, it just goes to double-check your reading and your writing. And so that concludes the superintendent's part of the report. And now I will ask our student representatives to come forward to provide their report as well. There's no applause?
Good evening. I am Riley Bertrand, I am the Student Council President for Raytown South High School. In the post-homecoming world that is Raytown South, we have a lot of planning that we can do. And so you know, main theme of what we've done for October and November would be planning, planning, planning. On this includes our Christmas party, which is happening on December the eighteenth. And just as a refresher, it is social workers in elementary schools connect with kids who needy children who could benefit from donations from South High and, and get things off a Christmas wish list for them. And Raytown South always hosts a Christmas party and Student Council organizes the fundraising that we do. One thing new that we have this year is to encourage more student one awareness and also participation in the Christmas party is our initiative to do our top five advisory classes are going to have an open gym and the top five based on how much money they raised. And so I'm excited to see how much money we can actually get within, I think it was Monday to the thirtieth that we're going to be collecting funds. Another thing we have is Mr. Cardinal, which is a pageant show for sports and activities where they nominate our participant. We wanted to do something very community-focused and we feel like this is one of those community events that we can bring Southside together. We're, this is very, this is a second semester project, but so you know, it's not exactly all fleshed out, so we're going to have like fashion categories such as beach wear or formal wear, monochromatic outfits that the nominees can dress up in and we're going to have a talent show. So again, it's all kind of back in the mind because it's second semester. However, it's, it's always nice to get that ball rolling as soon as possible. Any questions for me? Awesome, I'm going to turn this over to Carmella.
Hi, my name is Carmella Lassley, I am Student Council Secretary at Ray South High School. And I am on the Black Student, uh, Black History Program Committee. And so we started early on planning on what we want to do for Black History for Black History Month since we did not have one last year. So for this program, like a couple of things that we had in mind was having the choir sing a Black National Anthem, have our step team perform, have a couple of games like Black Jeopardy and Black Wheel of Fortune, like a slideshow. Talking about African-Americans and recognizing people in Kansas City and what they've contribute here and like art pieces made by our Black students. We also wanted to get like shirts made and have our Black Student Union involved in this program since they wasn't really involved and I didn't really know about it last year either. I just came, I found out today in Student Council that by our Black Student Union President that they were shut down by our principal. And I, me and a couple of other Student Council members had joined and want to help help Black Student Union evolve and get their voices out there and start having meetings. So we can like get that going. And not just the program, but we also like want to do stuff throughout February too. So, yeah. Any questions? What'd you say? It's already people on Black Student Union. The president says about twenty of them, but since they're so busy and like they didn't really have that somebody to speak up for them. So I'm wanting to do that and get them out there. Thank you.
Do you guys already have activities planned out? A schedule?
Um, that's what we're working on, to plan out how long like the program is going to be. And like how and when to meet like Black Student Union, how often to meet a week. We was thinking twice a week, Mondays after school and then Friday during advisory.
Riley has some information, just, I would love to be a part of anything that any of you guys have on, but most definitely I want to be a part of that.
Mr. President, I know there's no way your principal shut down. I want to give him a chance to respond.
That's what.
He's right behind you.
That's what I was told.
Okay, alright.
So. Yeah, no, that's what I was told.
Okay. Because I just know he didn't do that.
You said something about local people, Kent City, Black people in the games, like some of the just knowing and bringing recognition.
Yes, and like specifically talking about Eighteenth and Vine, since a lot of stuff goes on down there and it's like a lot of Black people that have small businesses and that they come and bring they, they stuff down there. So I was talking to one of the teachers and said, she said she had connections, like personally who knew people who grew up in Eighteenth and Vine and would like to share like some of the history that went down, like to bring them to Ray South and have them in the program to talk about.
I got, I got a suggestion, there's a, there's some people in Raytown that probably should look up. Name Bobby Salisbury probably be a good one.
Actually, the, the guy that owns the first African-American brewery is a Raytown alum and we just honored him. So the first African-American brewery that's Eighteenth and Vine is actually a Raytown alum. So that's probably somewhere you need to start with.
I don't know if this high school.
I'm just saying because it's actually political people that's in there, with him, a guy named Jason that's in there that can help you out a tremendous amount. There's one of his friends, but I'm just saying like his guys is in there. They go into the frat nights, they, I mean, and it will help you out. Absolutely. Absolutely, and he was looking to help you help out Raytown children with resources. So it's a lot of people that's willing to come back, that want to help out Raytown. You know, a part of us being part of CAC and community engagement, that's kind of what we're trying to do is bring resources back to Raytown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello Board, my name is Karen Shelley and I am Raytown South's Student Council Vice President, forgot there for a second. I am here to talk about our like smaller things we've been working on in class such as the book we are reading, it is called Action-Packed Leadership and it's by Kyle Wilkum. And it goes into different details on like a, on a more like deep level of like communication and leadership and like things like time management and networking that I think any high school student could deem useful for their future and success. So we are getting into that along with attending Southwood's trunk or tree, just like Mr. Newton. We helped pass out candy for that and Southwood was very welcoming of us and it was a very cool experience for that. Um, show the support, I get it. Then our, as we're moving into October in the winter season in our winter sports, obviously basketball is starting, which is a big thing for high school. Our first home game, our first boys' home game is February, Friday. And it is Space Jam themed, so if any of you guys are down to come in your jerseys or like alien attire, we would love to see it. I'm looking at you this, Dr. Martin Knox. Um, we would love to see you guys there, getting into basketball season and planning themes and stuff like that goes back into our spirit. Goal to just bring up some positive energy at South and the community, so thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you guys.
Oh, okay, it's up. Sorry. Hello Board, hi Mr. President, hi Dr. Knox. I'm Eliza Soria, President of our Student Council and this is our student review and we're going to have the alley.
Okay, my name's Allison Buster, I'm Vice President of Raytown Student Council and recently we went to our Student Council districts on October twenty-seventh at Center High School. We had forty-nine Student Council members attend the event. They had to get up bright and early, we had to be at the school at six-thirty and they stayed all the way until at least two o'clock. But when we were at districts, we were able to see how other schools ran their student councils and get new ideas and have different mentalities of how we can have more school spirit. We were the secretary for the 2022 through 2023 school year and we were tasked to provide gifts for all of the other schools in our district. So we gave them lunch bags illustrated with the Trails West symbol on them and they were really cute and everybody liked them. And then we also held four block talks, which was a discussion time that we were able to share some of our ideas and events that we host at Raytown High School such as Ribbon for Awareness, Egg Tastic Pet Drive and our haunted hallways. Such as Ribbon for Awareness, Egg Tastic Pet Drive, and our Haunted Hallways.
The next day was a filled week. We had our first large community event um called Haunted Hallways, and it was on October twenty eighth. And over two hundred and fifty kids and like with their adults came, and it was a very, it's just a fun event that hosted a trick or treat part, And there was also a haunted house inside too. Hello, everybody. My name is Sierra Waters. I am the Student Council Treasurer at Raytown High School, and I'm gonna be discussing and also drum major, proud drum major, just like, just like Dr. Knox. And I'm gonna be talking about upcoming events that's going on down in Raytown. Our theater department is putting on the Very, not very first, but um first, all women's play is Sister Act this week. It's starting Thursday and it will end Sunday from starting at seven. And then the BSU Powder Puff fundraiser was happening currently as we're speaking. It started at like five o'clock and just ended at seven, and it was It was just a fundraiser to help awareness, bring bring awareness, my bad, bring awareness to breast cancer and raise funds for research and all that. Student Council is also raising money to support four families for Adopt a Family and It has started this week and you know, it it's going, it's going. And we're trying our best as like the financial and marketing committee to try to not post on social media as the social worker told us to, But also try to get the word out all throughout the school uh by Um putting out announcements and having flyers all around the school to see if you know people are still interested. And we're also having everybody in Student Council participate By asking for donations during breakfast and lunch and also like going outside to ask for donations as well. And that is it for me. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So The goal is to get any donations from anywhere like us as a Student Council should be asking people outside of school and inside of school to ask for donations. Uh you can, you can ask me if you if you want, if you want to donate some money. But mainly, all of our Student Council members are asking for donations within our school, which is because we can't really go outside of school Because we can't use the internet and we can't use like digital money. So yeah.
And I think wh- what I'm asking is, do you need food? Do you need toys?
We need
Gloves?
We need currency.
Down, I'm trying to tell you.
Money?
Yeah, physical, physical money. Yes, sir.
Do you have a goal, Emo? Jingles or foes?
Jingles or
Kinda foes or kinda jingles?
Oh, both. We'll take anything. And our goals for us as Student Council is at least every single um active Student Council member should donate at least five dollars, Whether that's outside or within their own income.
Mr. President, how did you guys decide what families you're going?
We were going based off of what happened last year and how our data was from last year. We were trying to use the money that we had already raised so far this school year. And we just wanted to stay within Our bubble. We didn't want to go too crazy because of some things that happened last year that didn't go so well. We personally don't pick the fa- We personally don't pick the families. Families are given to us and like as a Student Council, we can we can provide for For families, just like Sierra said, based on like our data and what we've gathered and how much family we can support. Because other clubs and like sponsors also um contribute to Adopt a Family. We just do for families. But some of them host one, two, it's like, it's, it can vary.
And the only way you guys get donations is cash donations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, Mr. Burton, Vice President Watson, Board of Education. I have a few items before you this evening. First off, we want to congratulate one of your fellow board members, Mr. Nody Newton, Who earned the Certificate of Achievement from MSBA for um completing his essential certified board member training. So congratulations.
It was a lot of work. Yes, it was. Yeah. Good job. He is, okay, I'm telling you.
Yeah, right in front. We're gonna Photoshop it back. Okay, also this evening, um we want to recognize that the district was awarded twelve thousand five hundred dollar legacy grant for student health From Acrocs KC, and the district nurses will be using that to purchase equipment, and we have a check presentation for the grant this evening.
Hi, some of you, um I don't even have a microphone, I'm really loud. So I recognize some of you. Actually, we changed our name. Um previously, we were Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation, and now we're Acrocs KC, uh which is a name that reflects Our religious um roots a little bit, but also I think it sounds a lot cooler and more nimble and more tech-driven Than our old names do because we're doing some pretty cool things, leveraging technology and um and just uh all around being a more modern organization. So um we have been giving Raytown School District grants um for I think five years, six years. We've given the school district more than seventy-five thousand dollars. This is part of our Legacy Grants for Student Health Program, which we started back in two thousand seventeen and actually all told, we've given away about one point three million. Uh so with these grant dollars, school districts and a handful of charter schools can purchase um health screening equipment, Um asthma treatment supplies, I always forget some, mental health training and and like crisis management sort of training. Um also disease mitigation supplies that obviously came out of COVID. Um but you all this year are spending your twelve thousand five hundred dollars on some asthma treatment supplies, um thermometers, stethoscopes, And some other um screening equipment that can help keep the children that you love so much, where did she go? There she is, um safe and healthy, right? Because it's not always about to just being in school, it's about teaching them good habits for later on and obviously just monitoring their health um conditions Um over the years that they're in the district. So um really excited to be here tonight. This is one of the most fun things that we get to do every year. Um it's just really a great pleasure to be able to be here and uh and bring this giant fake check, which is not negotiable. What is it? Whatever, it doesn't work. We already sent you the real money. Um but so but one of the greatest things that uh that I always like to share about this grant is most school districts, because they're publicly supported by tax dollars, Are not eligible to apply for private grant dollars through like the Kaufman Foundation or H and R Block Foundation, places like that. So we're one of the rare institutions um locally that gives to school districts, and uh and we're really proud of that Because part of our mission is to support student health, and um and there's really no better way to do that than to invest in the district. So we're really excited to be here. I want to thank Melissa for everything that she does um to help us um get these dollars into into the nurses' hands. Um I also just want to thank the nurses and other health professionals on your team, as well as teachers and everybody else. It's been a rough few years for all of you and we really appreciate your commitment and everything that you do to help keep the kids and staff healthy. Um it's just been a a rough, rough time, and we had a breakfast recently. We were invited Melissa and all of her peers from local districts um to talk, And it was um it was just heartbreaking what they've all been through, and so we really just can't thank them enough. I get choked up about it and I'm not even a nurse. But we get, we just um just so appreciate their commitment. Um they've really been through a lot and um and the things that we heard Um were pretty harrowing, and so please, please thank your school nurses, appreciate them, um do everything you can to keep them, which I know you do, But um but they're um they're really just um one in a million, each one of them, and we're very, very grateful for all that they do. And uh and we're grateful that you're here tonight too. Um I don't think you realize how rare it is that students get to speak as much as you all did at this meeting. It's really, really special. It doesn't happen at all the school where meetings I go to, so this is a really great opportunity for you to show some leadership. And um and I know that they're really impressed to hear from you, so but again, thank you for everything. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. If we can get someone to take a couple pictures, that would be awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And finally, last but not least this evening is our Ray of Hope, and we are recognizing the students and staff At Life University, and we have a video um that showcases a little bit more about what exactly Life University is.
My name is Vivian McKinney, and um I'm one of the teachers at the Life University Program. Life University is a program where we practice um being polite, professional, and productive In independent living, employment, social, and leisure settings. And um in order to come to Life University, the IEP team makes a decision with Um all the members, which include parents and teachers and the students themselves. And we talk about what next steps are you ready for and how can you be most successful in the rest of your life? At the Business Park, um interns do internships, so they work um around the building. We have a big campus, we have transportation there and buildings and grounds, we have the concession stands, and so Um interns leave the Business Park and go and do jobs specifically in different different areas. And then when they're in the Business Park, we have about fifteen kind of micro businesses That we've solicited from the community or that we've created ourselves, so they can practice job skills, following directions, new vocabulary In settings where they may like to get a job someday. At the Transition House, we practice independent living skills, and we also have an office set up, so we practice office work at the Transition House. So in the office, we have to be really quiet, and that is different than the Business Park, which is a little louder, and sometimes we listen to music or chat while we work. Um when we practice our independent living skills, our goal is for every intern, by the time they've completed Life University, To um be able to clean an entire house themselves, make their own snack. Um and also we practice socialization, so we want every intern to, once the school's no longer there for them, To be able to contact their friends and find people to hang out with and do things with. I think it's just important to know that the interns drive this program, so the interns have built the program, they have created the program. Sometimes they they help us by just telling us what their wants and needs are, but also they've done a lot of the groundwork. They do the cleaning, they do the mowing, they beautify the spaces. We turned the old metal shop into a business park, and that is largely because of the interns' work. We even had volunteers who had been interns in the past or A-plus students or TAs Come back over the summer and volunteer their time to make that space what it is now.
Hi, my name is Madison Slocum, and I am officially a special education teacher at Life University. Uh we talk about externships a lot. Our externships are KC Pet Project. So our interns will go over there and they help make dog treats for the dogs. They love it. It's so much fun, and then we get to do tours after. So we get to see the dogs and the cats. We work at a clothing closet and a food pantry, helping to hang the clothes and working with customers, As well in the food pantry, working with customers. We work for um River of Refuge, and we help do anything that they need. We've cleaned outside, they have a food pantry, a clothing closet, Just anything that they need, we've helped with, and we also help clean at the Wellness Center, which we go in and we clean the equipment maybe once a week. We've also done that.
Who are, who are, who are we? We are Life University.
This part of my day is being with being with my best friends and who I want, being with my best, my best teachers.
Yes.
Want to tell her about your job situation?
Yeah. West management. A day, a year, paper, uh, right, tie, working. So I'm gonna, I just stack it a shelf, grocery bagger, and And I stack it a shelf and I do a forty towel. And I'm gonna see all the charger, pick all the charger, put it on the dumpster.
Who are, who are, who are we? We are Life University. We are polite. We are proactive. We are professional like you.
And uh Ms. Vivian McKinney is here to accept her Ray of Hope on behalf of her and all of her students. We have certificates for all of them.
All right. Next, we have a public comment period uh on agenda items. Uh we have no one signed up tonight, so we'll move past that agenda item. And now we have our uh board committee reports. Um let's just read out the finance committee. No report from finance committee this time. Uh Policy Review Committee.
I could if I scroll. Apologize for that. The committee met uh August the fourteenth and uh minutes were approved. The committee met, uh, August the fourteenth and, um, minutes were approved. Policy ECG animals on district property was discussed. No action was taken. Policy BBF school board, uh, member ethic was discussed and sent to the, sent for first read, uh, for the November thirteenth meeting. Meeting was adjourned. Uh, next meeting is December the eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you. Capital improvements, uh, committee, um, will be meeting, uh, Wednesday at four thirty. Four thirty. So, um, have a report at our next meeting. Community engagement committee.
The community engagement committee met this evening and what we discussed was, um, the dual credit. It's actually two dual credits. So we'll be discussing, um, the other dual credit. Uh, we will be starting the youth athletic committee. We'll be doing one. So we'll be discussing that. That's been tabled. Uh, there knows to be sports committees. Um, we also discussed the college culture network. I don't know if Dr. Martin Knox would like to elaborate on that? I got it. Okay. So, um, we introduced the, uh, college culture network where Dr. Martin Knox and, uh, Mr. Burton met on that. We'll, we'll be introducing that to the public here soon. Um, it is something that I'm like peacock proud of the man. Ms. Bobby South very put together for the students. Uh, I think you guys are gonna get a wealth of like, it'd be great for you all. I, I think the race out students, I introduced it, but now it's about to come to fruition for you all. I'm very, very happy that it has come to fruition where to be totally brought all the way out. And what it is, is a scholarship opportunity for all. Um, and I'm very, very proud. It won't cost the community anything. It won't cost taxpayers anything, but it's something that is very, very, it's, it's a staple point that we wanted to bring. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Salisbury for being like the Batman and letting me be Robin on this. Uh, and I, I, I think I dragged her around a lot, a lot and, and through a lot. Cause it'd be a lot of like hours of conversation, but a lot of the things I want to get done. And I also want to thank Ms. Kat Hoffman of this in here, um, for the conversation. And, um, Ms. Carolyn Whitney, who I, I get on a lot of the people, the community's nerves from, for a lot of the things that I do. And I am in the community a lot. And I also want to thank the race town south students for having me and coming up with a bunch of ideas and them entertaining. And I came up there. And also the race out principal who, um, who, who, who has put up with a lot. And I had a lot of questions walking through the airport with them. And Dr. Martin Knox, who also, uh, when I went to Nashville with them on the real world learning experience. And, and they also, I had a lot of questions for a lot of the people when I went on these, on, on the experience with them. So, um, that's, that's one of the things we also have going. Um, and, uh, I also talked to them about doing something with TikTok, uh, which we'll be talking about with, with them, uh, and hopefully trying to, trying to talk more about this as far as social media and seeing how this goes with, with Dr. Martin Knox, the race out, uh, and that's pretty much it for the, for the community engagement committee.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, curriculum professional development committee, Natalie, Miss Natalie Johnson, Barry's not here. Um, safety committee. Move on. And then, uh, citizens advisory committee.
So I'm sorry, I'm having allergy issues over here. Um, so I, um, we led the citizens advisory committee to meeting the other day. And it was a continuation of the previous meeting. The previous meeting, we actually discussed our, uh, board and district goals and its relevance to the work around our strategic plan. And we began to talk about one of the goals, and that was the recruitment and retention of our staff. And so instead of sitting back, one of the things we talk about often is that it's easy for someone to identify a problem, but it's most challenging when it's time to develop solutions. And so I always believe that it's two minutes on the problem and 10 minutes on the solution, or in this case, multiple meetings on the solutions. And so we came together as a community to talk about some of the things that we can do as a district with very good ideas, with how we can support our teachers and retain them while also recruiting other staff members for the district. Um, we talked about the benefits aspect. We talked about ways in which we could minimize, if you will, uh, the workload for many of our teachers. Um, and so we had very meaningful conversation that was led, uh, by Dr. Calcara. So I would say that it was a very, uh, meaningful meeting. We actually had two items on the agenda. We were not able to get to the second item and the second item was, um, or is, um, a grant that we received as a district for $300,000, which is safety upgrades. And so I heard the whistle in the audience that, that was with the $300,000 and that'll be gone before we can blink. Um, because the upgrades that we have to put in place, um, will actually absorb all of that money before we could even, uh, probably identify other needs. So what we've looked at is enhancing our security systems, looking at doors, fences and some other items that we could, uh, support with that grant. So we are very grateful that we were able to acquire the grant. But again, I provided the, uh, citizens committee, uh, advisory committee with that information and to ask them to contribute to that conversation. Although the grant was submitted with ideas and that's how we were able to acquire, we still want to make adjustments so that it is more meaningful and beneficial to us as a district. Uh, that concludes the citizens advisory, uh, report.
All right. I'm sorry. I didn't get a motion before we started all that. You know.
Mr. President, move the board through August fourteenth, twenty hundred. Finance committee minutes, October ninth, meeting with the community engagement committee minutes, October ninth, meeting with the board policy committee minutes, seven hundred and six, community advisory committee minutes, asking.
Motion made and seconded.
The Raytown Educational Foundation. Um, I have the meeting highlights for the Raytown.
Can you vote first? We didn't.
Oh, I didn't vote. Okay. Sorry, guys.
And now we'll have the report of the Raytown Education Foundation meeting.
I have the meeting highlights for the Raytown Educational Foundation Board of Trustees, uh, meeting held on August fourth, twenty twenty-three. New board member, we welcome Jennifer Crosby to the Raytown Educational Foundation of Trustees. Jennifer is a nineteen ninety Raytown High School graduate and has been an employee for Raytown Quality Schools for twenty-nine years. She currently serves as the school district's special education assessment coordinator. Jennifer is, uh, Raytown Educational Foundation employee donator. Uh, with the longest tenure of donations for twenty-six years. She also provides leadership for the Raytown Summer Lunch Ministry. We have a new secretary, Amy Pine, has been appointed by President Renee Purdy to fill a vacancy in the Office of Secretary. Amy's term as secretary will end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Annual goals, strategies, targets and measures for the foundation's annual goals were presented by members of the donor development, finance and marketing committees. The goals for twenty twenty-three through twenty-four are as follows. To maintain and improve the financial health of the foundation, to raise general awareness of the foundation, to recruit, thank and nurture donors, run for excellence, ready, set, glow. The fund, the foundation held its twenty-fourth Run for Excellence, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The total number of entries was one hundred and eighty-one. Of those totals, one hundred and nineteen were runners and walkers. And sixty-two of the total entries were virtual runners and walkers, mostly cheering from home, stealing their pajamas. The overall male winner was Fred Far, uh, Faran, Faran, who is a Raytown High graduate. A good number of the participants were Raytown Quality School employees and family members. Special thanks to our personal and outstanding announcer, Dr. Martin Knox, who encouraged medal winners to do cartwheels as they accepted their medal packets. That ends my report.
Made it through it. All right. So thank you for that. And next, on the new business, we'll have, uh, ballot language for board of election, board of education director. And the motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the ballot language to elect board of education directors for submission to the election authorities no later than five P M. On the tenth Tuesday prior to the April second, twenty twenty-four election.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have the, uh, general obligation refunding bond series.
Mr. President. I move the board approve the resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation refunding Missouri direct deposit program series twenty twenty-three B. The Raytown C two school district prescribing the form of details of said bonds providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Motion made and seconded. Hello?
At this time, I would like to invite, um, Joe Kinder from Stiefel and Ben Thompson from Gilmore and Bell to discuss further the refunding twenty twenty-three bonds.
I am Jackie Vernon, the Director of Business Operations. I've not had to sit here before. I will get better.
Yeah, I know. You know who's in charge.
Get to talk first.
Yeah. Well, good evening, board. Thank you for having us out tonight. My name is Joe Kinder. I'm with Stiefel. We do the underwriting for the board. We are, last time we saw you was May, so we're here to talk about the last kind of push financially in this phase of your financial and capital improvements plan. And what that means for you moving forward in the last phase from a timing perspective is the refinancing of your two thousand fourteen bonds. So when we talk about your bonds, we're talking about that dedicated debt service levy that you have. So you have your fund three or your debt service fund that you set annually every year, and that can only be used to pay bricks and mortar debt. This year, of course, you passed a bond issue to do a bunch of improvements. And you, you passed an, an issue to transfer levy from your debt into your operations. And so as we were completing all of those things, we had simultaneously this two thousand fourteen issue that will be eligible as of December first to be refinanced on a tax exempt basis. And what that means is that when you issue those bonds, the investors, the holders of those bonds don't have to pay income tax on the interest earned, both at the state and the federal level. So this is the most advantageous way for school boards to borrow money. And that time, uh, is a ninety day window within what we call a call provision or an optional redemption provision. And essentially what that means is when we go out to sell these bonds and our job, you'll see in our fee in a little bit built in here is to take our three hundred and almost four hundred now, I don't know. I'm looking at you. You work for a different firm. Uh, almost four hundred institutional bond salesmen who are going to go out and actually auction off your securities in five thousand dollar increments to, I think we've got over four hundred thousand open investor accounts from everyone like Vanguard, NCAP, BlackRock, big trust companies that you've heard about before that hold billions of dollars, will order bonds from the Raytown School District, all the way down to individuals that are in this room. All we're trying to do is find who is willing to pay the highest price for your bonds, which means lowest yield. Uh, but in order to do that, we lock you out essentially of being able to refinance those bonds because we want to find the end user or the person willing to pay that highest price. And part of that means we've got to give them a guaranteed return on their investment. So return over time. So it used to be the industry standard was ten years and this bond issue that we're talking about now is the two thousand fourteen issue. It is callable as of March first of twenty twenty-four, but again, we've got a ninety day window, so we can refinance those as soon as December first. With rates going up, even though the Fed has calmed down, we wanted to get you in a position to be able to access that capital, that refinancing as soon as possible. So the plan actually right now is we're passing tonight, what we call a parameters resolution, which I'll let Mr. Thompson cover. But that will, similar to what we did in May, that will allow us to move forward and issue those or do the sale of those bonds tomorrow. But we wanted you all to be able to actually sit down and listen to us and talk you through this again before we went out and did that. The other way we could have done that was come back at your December board meeting, but that of course is another month away. And we wanted to make sure we could strike while the iron's hot. You know, that's not always important. We can't guarantee what happens with the market, but we were just looking at a deal, uh, that we did in May. We actually pushed out all of our bond issues in about three weeks' time because of the dip in the market related to Silicon Valley Bank and some other things. I don't know how much you remember all the, the big fun lecture I gave last time. Uh, but we just looked at it and we think that there's the potential that, you know, we can't be in the market with your new bonds, but that saved you maybe as much as six or seven million dollars in interest costs. And you, I mean, really the board and the taxpayers of the Raytown School District. So by going out and, and being quick and being ready on the bond issue side of things, we got that done. Now we're within our ninety day window, December first, so we're trying to do the same thing for you again in this rising interest rate environment. As soon as we have that opportunity, we want to put you in that position. So the numbers that we handed out, admittedly, our, our numbers running program doesn't do a great job of giving you data and information. Uh, but this is our kind of summary packet on what we're actually doing here. And really what we're doing is we're taking that two thousand fourteen issue and we're doing a couple of things. Even though that was in fourteen and you say that was in a very low interest rate environment, you all also struggle with what we call body capacity. The state limits how much debt you can have outstanding. And they count that debt by the principal amount. So we can do something called issuing premium bonds, which allows you to access more money without having greater par amount. You do pay above market interest rate, but you get more money upfront. Essentially you agree to pay a higher rate of return and investors in return give you more money than the face value of that, that bond upfront. So those bonds in two thousand fourteen were done that way to do some additional projects. And I think actually produced almost three million dollars of additional money for you to do those projects. Because of that, now we're able to come back and refinance that. So we're talking about debt that's sitting out there at five percent. We're going to lower it to somewhere around three and a half percent. So nice thirty percent reduction in the rate. Uh, the other thing that we're doing because of the reassessment, you know, when we, when we were in May, we knew that you were going to be reassessed. We didn't have great data. We didn't get really good data until September, but we know there are still some appeals and protests and other things outstanding. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that while we, you had some cash on hand and we wanted to make sure that we were putting that to use in a higher interest rate environment. We also left quite a bit of room in your annual cash flows, how your debt performs on an annual basis, revenue versus expenditures. So we're going to shorten this debt up by about a year, a little more than a year, nothing too wild or crazy. But what we're going to do is to cap off this phase of the financing plan is open you up for the ability in twenty twenty-seven, as you work towards finishing up these building projects and you work toward that next phase of your capital planning, that you'll have options, whether it's to go out and do a no tax rate increase bond issue, whether it's to go out and reallocate funds back into your operations, the same way you just did with this election, a mix of both. We just want, as you start to build that, that plan moving forward, we want you to have those options, that freedom and flexibility. And that's the last, kind of last phase of wrapping up this plan is doing that. So we're, we've got some cash flow. We want to, in this higher interest rate environment, shorten that up and allow you room moving forward. And so we think that opens up, you know, somewhere in the three to four million dollar range conservatively in twenty twenty-seven that you'll have revenues, whether it's to spend on, again, additional projects annually, or if you wanted to shift some of that back over into your operations and address your operations. But certainly want to make sure we're giving you that freedom and flexibility and that we're looking at your total plan of finance. We're not just looking at your debt. We want to make sure we're taking care of your operations as well and make sure that we're folding this and fitting this into your plan. So all of your issues have these call provisions and you will have these kind of regular intervals. We plan it that way. So you'll have in twenty twenty-seven, some room open up. You'll have another call provision there in late twenty twenty-nine that you can go out and, and potentially restructure some debt, move some things around if you want, or save some money. And then again in twenty thirty-three. So you've kind of got this nice setup procedure or, or plan that you can live, breathe, you know, it can grow over time. It can change with your needs, but you have those future abilities. We're not locking you up for ten or twenty, twenty years. But, but anyway, this handout here is what we're talking about. Our fee under that first page is lit up under the total underwriters discount, zero point six. under that first page is lit up under the total underwriters discount, zero point six percent of the par, that hundred eight thousand five hundred ten dollars. Our fee is based again on that par amount. So we're planning to be in the market tomorrow. We're already marketing your securities, so I don't anticipate a lot of change. We've got a good market. But there's a chance that could go up or down just slightly depending on how big the size of the issue ends up being. The remainder of the cost of issuance below that, our other professional service firms that work for you all, not for us, to complete this transaction. Uh, the largest of which is Gilmore and Bell, your bond counsel who drafts all the documentation. And then o- offers up the opinion that these bonds are able to be tax exempt under the IRS statutes. Uh, just some bond statistics on there you probably don't care a whole lot about, but the next page, your comparison page is the ki- the page you care about. Uh, the net new date D slash S uh, is the column in the middle. If you were to pass the resolution this evening, that is what we anticipate your new payments would be. The old net D slash S one, one column over to the right, admittedly some bad language is, uh, is actually the payments that you will make if you do nothing. And then that savings column on the right is totaling those up. You do have a payment March first of twenty twenty-four that we are not going to touch, so we're going to leave that there. There's no benefit to that, to refinancing that because you're already ready to pay that. Uh, but from there on out, the numbers in parentheses are losses and the numbers not in parentheses are savings. And so you can see how we've accelerated some of that debt. And so all of that saving is there in thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four where you kind of had a bunch up of principal. And so we freed some of that up and moved some of your debt around and particularly shortened it up to provide some additional savings. Uh, the next page shows your debt service requirements broken out, page three, and then page four shows you what you care about, your yield columns. You're going to be yielding anywhere from three point five one percent to three point four five percent, that column in the middle. Uh, the coupon rate, again, we are using premium bonds that is preferred by the market, so we are trying to in attract the broadest base investors and lower your interest rates. But that also provides you about a million, one point two million dollars in bonding capacity, state capacity. By reducing them out, you have outstanding, so it does add that benefit as well. And then, uh, the debt service to maturity and call, you can see those are the payments that you were making that we are planning to refinance. So, uh, saving two point seven million dollars as is listed on the column, page two, for the Raytown School District over ten years is bending over and picking up pennies. It really is. Uh, but we want, I've got a partner who used to say, I'll bend over and pick up pennies all day long. And so we want to make sure we're doing that, right? So, um, you know, this is a nineteen million dollar deal where you're saving two point seven, but we've got the opportunity. The longer we wait, we actually would need rates to come down to save more. So we're here to make sure we're accessing those savings as quickly as we can. Sorry for the, the long explanation, but, uh, I'll hand it over to Ben Thompson and take questions.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ben Thompson with Gilmore and Bell, uh, the district's bond counsel. Um, as Joe mentioned, uh, a lot of times we'll come to, uh, the district. Uh, and there'll be a resolution in front of you and numbers will be final and, and the Stiefel had gone into the market that day and priced, and that's the numbers. Um, this is a little bit different. Um, and it's similar though to what we did, uh, for the new money bonds, uh, earlier this year. Where you have a parameters resolution in front of you. Uh, and within the, it, within the resolution, there are set parameters that Stiefel must uh, hit in their pricing numbers for the resolution to be valid and for the bonds to be essentially issued. So tomorrow, they, Stiefel has the, has the parameters. Tomorrow they'll be in the market and they'll make sure that those parameters are hit. And if they are hit, then the resolution, uh, is active. And we will, uh, we'll put final numbers into all the other documents. Um, prepare a transcript, a final transcript that we will send to the state auditor. State auditor will look at the transcript. Make sure that the, uh, the resolution, uh, the state constitution, uh, and, uh, Missouri laws are all followed as far as the refunding bond law goes, uh, which they will be. And, um, they will approve the transaction or the, the transcript. And the bonds will be essentially, uh, valid and issued, uh, by the district. Um, so tomorrow that will be in the market will price. And, uh, we will, after that, we'll, like I said, get the transcript together and, uh, this is set to close on December fifth. So, um, at that, at that time, money will come in. Bonds we purchased, uh, and then money, the funds proceeds from those bonds will go to U M B to who is the paying agent on the twenty fourteen bonds. And they will take that money, invest it for approximately two and a half months until March first. And the interest, uh, earnings on that money combined with the proceeds of the bonds will go to pay off the twenty fourteen bonds on March first. So. Any questions? Happy, happy answer.
That's an excellent point. I, I missed the last page, but there you're going to earn actually above what you're paying out in interest between now and March first. So you're actually in a better position than if we were able to get these rates and waited until March first. We're going to earn almost five point five percent on that escrow and earn over a quarter of a million dollars just between December and March first when it can be called in. So, and those are, that is a government security that we can lock in. The rate will slightly change on a daily basis, but we'll lock it tomorrow and we know it's not going to change. So.
I just got one thing. Can we reverse the pages next time?
Yeah, yeah. It's terrible, isn't it? This is just, uh, it's a, we think this is the best numbers earning program and I don't think it's been updated in over twenty years.
You had me at two point seven million.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions?
Just a couple things. So last two fifty K you just mentioned, that's in addition to the two point seven million we're listing right here.
Well, that's include, the, the, the savings page is inclusive of that. So it will include the, the, the interest you'll earn in the escrow.
Okay. And this is great. Two point seven is great, but in the early years, we are paying higher payments. Are we good? That's good. We're good on cash flow on that and everything?
Yeah, the, so, you know, the only limiting factor for your debt issuance, let's say that, you know, of course debt's my world, so this is, uh, this is not how you have to use this money and you certainly wouldn't have to do that. But your capacity in twenty twenty-seven, not only do we feel that you could go up to your capacity on a no tax rate increase, but we also would be still amortizing principal right away if you went up to your capacity. Right now, we project that to be as high as maybe eighty million dollars. So, I mean, I'm, I really feel that you'll have three or four million dollars at a minimum of additional cash flow opening up here in fiscal twenty-eight for you, if you wanted to go in twenty-seven to do something like that.
Thanks.
Joe, can you explain sort of five point five four percent again?
Yeah, so the, so the IRS limits, uh, what you can earn in interest when you are a tax exempt issuer, because what they don't want you to do is go out and issue debt at a tax exempt rate. And then as a, as a non taxpayer, the school district can actually buy taxable securities and earn taxable interest without having to owe that. Uh, there are rare circumstances, and I probably should hand it over to Mr. Thompson for that, where we are not restricted, yield restricted. And so short-term interest rates are actually higher than midterm interest rates right now. And this, uh, five point five four percent return is through what we call state and local government securities, which is a guaranteed investment return by the federal government, uh, specifically for you all to actually buy securities that will then back general obligation debt. So it's designed for you to use to be a safe security because actually investors in those bonds will actually want to know if we don't have enough money to actually buy back the refunding, which we do not at this time, we're invest, we're putting, we're issuing less debt than we actually need. And then we're relying on those interest earnings. Investors will take the rating of the actual investment vehicle as well into account. And so we want to have something that are akin to federal securities. So occasionally, depending on the market and the size of the deal, we'll look at other avenues and options. But right now slugs, what we call S L G S, state and local government securities provide us the best and highest rate of return, uh, and that again allows us a half percent greater than what you're paying. So you actually are doing what we call arbitraging at that point. So over the next close to ninety days, you'll make more than you're paying out and have that additional savings.
Yeah, when you said arbitrage, I, I got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Pick a vote. Next, we'll have, uh, the Wellness Center membership increase. Uh, motion first. Masters. Mr. President, I move the board to approve a four dollar monthly increase on all Wellness Center facility user memberships.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I would like to bring up, um, Michael Dean, who is the Director of the Wellness Center, to answer any questions you may have about the price increase.
Just to reiterate, um, the org, uh, the Wellness Center now falls under the, uh, Department of Communications and Community, um, which is where it should be because it's really about community. Uh, so that's why Mrs. Wumble introduced Mr. Dean.
Good evening, Board, to each of you in your respective places. Again, my name is Michael Dean. What questions can I answer for you?
Well, how do we arrive at four dollars and see what it's for? But the, it's just based on the membership and and the cost divided, I guess.
No, we, uh, we looked at the last time that we did a rate increase, which was, uh, twenty nineteen and it was one dollar. So we looked at that increment to raise it and catch us up to where we would have been had we continued to increase by a dollar.
Mr. President. Um, how does this compare to, um, other local? Um, I won't say gyms, but workout facilities, um, in our area.
We are part of a thirty-two group membership, management membership, uh, of gyms in the Kansas City metro, and a lot of them after COVID decided to raise their prices uh, a little bit higher than what we're asking for due to make up the cost that they lost. Right now, we are actually thriving, so doing what they would do essentially, uh, is not needed for us. But what would happen from the increase that we would make would allow us to add more value to the Wellness Center.
Do you think, uh, the four dollars have any impact on the membership?
Uh, I really don't. Uh, the benefit that we have that other gyms don't have close by is that we have two pools. Uh, trying to find a pool with the needs of our community is a little tougher for them to find. They're either going to Longview Legacy, but why go there when you have something in your hometown that's more convenient for you?
Mr. President. What are some of the plans with the increase, um, that you all would like to do with the, uh, facility?
Thank you for asking. That's a great question. We are starting to, like I said, grow, so we're trying to add more value to the Wellness Center. Something that we haven't done that we used to do in the past is offer, uh, training for individuals, our older crowd, when they come into gyms, the biggest issue that they have is not being prepared or how to use uh, the machines that we have. So we have just recently added a A M fitness specialist that will do, uh, biometric training for individuals. They will also look at, uh, mobility for those individuals that are looking for that and then personalized training where they will, uh, they will make up a plan, workout plan for those individuals and take them through that. And that's something that we'll look to add to the P M as we see more people come through our doors. That will also look at, uh, equipment as well. So I'm going to give you a second answer as well. Um, as we continue to grow, some of our equipment in the Wellness Center is eight years old. And as more and more people use it, there's more wear and tear on those machines. So we have continued to upgrade the Wellness Center and we want to continue to do that more in the future as well.
So when he says older crowd, he means like you? You and you.
Doctor Douglas, I will take care of it tomorrow in class.
Mr. President, I want to ask this. This four dollars impacts senior citizens who come on silver sneakers and that type of, it doesn't-
No, ma'am. They're, they're, uh, sorry, go ahead.
No.
Uh, their insurance, their, uh, membership is paid through their insurance, so their insurance covers them for the three uh, insurances, uh, of silver sneakers, silver and fit and renew active. That is all paid through their insurance. Yes, ma'am.
You're noting. Man. Oh, man. Michael being there. But anyway. Think that's it.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
Turn off the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Vote. First read of, um, new policy be a B B F, school board member ethic. Just for information. Next, we'll have, uh, approval of consented agenda. Motion made and seconded. I will read the donations for this month. We had a donation of meals for staff worth a hundred dollars from Thomas Murray to Laurel Hills Elementary. We had a donation of candy for Booth Fest worth a hundred and fifty dollars from Ivanhoe United Church to Robertson Elementary. We had a donation of fifty, of a fifty dollar gift card from Costco whole house, wholesale, um, to Robertson Elementary School. And then we had a donation of thirty-eight hundred dollar gift card from Beth Spence at Office Depot to Southwood Elementary School. And a donation of three thousand dollars from Mount Washington Lodge number six fourteen and Raytown Lodge number three ninety-one to Northwood School for Music Therapy and Adaptive P E. We would like to thank all our, our community members for donating to us. And they're greatly appreciated and I'm sure is of great benefit. Thank you so much.